Okay, so it looks like it is 9:30, so we will go ahead and get started. Welcome to today's public hearing on the draft Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook. Chapter 533, statute of 2017, Assembly Bill 1671, allows the state Water Board to create a policy handbook establishing standards for backflow protection and cross connection control, and requires the state Water Board to host two public hearings before the adoption of the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook. This is the first public hearing for the adoption of the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook. The Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook will update the current regulations on the cross connection control found in Title 17 of the California Code of Regulations in Division 1, Chapter 5, Subchapter 1, Group 4. Today's hearing will begin with a brief presentation from the Division of Drinking Water staff, summarizing the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook. Following the presentation, we will begin receiving your comments. We ask that comments be kept in no more than three minutes in length to help ensure that everyone interested in commenting is afforded the opportunity. Please understand that today's public hearing is an opportunity for you, the public, to provide comments on the draft Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook. You may also submit written comments by following the instructions provided in the notice of public hearing. I want to let you know that today's meeting, or public hearing, is being webcast and recorded, so please speak clearly. In order to comply with public gathering limitations and physical distancing requirements as authorized in the Governor's Executive Orders to address the COVID-19 emergency, there is no physical meeting room. For people who want to listen or watch to the meeting, staff have set up a webcast channel on the Water Board's Public Meeting Live Webcast page for a live webcast of this hearing. If you missed today's hearing, a recording of the webcast will be made available on our website. We will be receiving public comments through Zoom meeting platform for today's hearing. If you intend to present or comment, or think you might be interested in commenting, you should already be signed into the Zoom meeting using the Zoom meeting ID provided on the state Water Board's website and the password you received when you registered. If you have not received a password, you can register for the Zoom meeting by going to zoom.us/join and enter the meeting ID 93701171024. If you are experiencing difficulties, you can email DDW staff now Please include speaker comments in the subject line so our staff can follow up with you. For those in the Zoom meeting, you will be on mute and your cameras turned off until it is your turn to speak. Our staff will then unmute you and ask you to turn on your camera if you have one. When you are done speaking, you will be placed on mute and your camera turned off. You may choose to exit the Zoom meeting, or you can remain logged in for the remainder of the meeting. You can also join us for the remainder of the meeting on the webcast. That, and I'd like to turn the hearing over to Zach, who will be giving our DDW presentation.
All right, hopefully this is working. Hi, my name is Zach Rounds. I'm with the State Water Resources Control Board, Division of Drinking Water, and one of the people on the State Board's workgroup for developing the Cross Connection Policy Control Handbook, which, when approved, will replace the existing Title 17 regulations governing backflow prevention. This is the first public hearing for the handbook and is intended for you to be able to provide oral comments on the handbook. If you would like to submit written comments, you may still do so at the email address on the screen right now. And now, area. Current information regarding the handbook timeline and a downloadable copy of the current draft handbook can be found at the below website. Alternatively, I've been able to find the website by searching, doing a web search for California Drinking Water Cross Connection Handbook, and the first link that showed up was the correct one. Public comment on the current draft handbook closes on April 27, 2021, which is also today. This is the current schedule for the adoption of the Cross Connection Policy Handbook. The handbook was open to the public comment on February 27 of this year. Today is the first public hearing and the close of public comment. After this, the Division of Drinking Water will review, will re-review all comments submitted, make any revisions to the draft handbook as necessary, and release the revised handbook for public comment. The duration of the second public comment period and the date of the second public hearing is unknown at this time and may depend on the extent of any changes made to the handbook or responses to comments that are necessary. Following the second comment period, the division intends to make any final revisions to the handbook and bring it to a board meeting for board adoption. As Ashley said, the handbook is intended to replace the existing Cross Connection Control regulations, which are decades old and have only had minor revisions. The state Water Board was granted authority to replace the regulations with a policy handbook by Assembly Bill 1671. This bill lays out the requirements for adopting the handbook, including having at least two public hearings prior to adoption. Assembly Bill 1180 later amended the requirements to include provisions for the use of a swivel L or changeover device to supply potable water to a dual-plum system during an interruption in recycled water service, and that use of a swivel L or changeover device shall be consistent with any notification and backflow protection provisions contained in the policy handbook. Major differences between the handbook and the existing regulations are increased requirements for cross connection programs and cross connection plans, including both public outreach and education requirements and local entity coordination. The handbook creates a definition and structure for hazard assessments. The handbook also provides information on installation criteria for devices and updates the required backflow protection for various types of hazards. And as mentioned earlier, includes swivel L, I'm sorry, includes swivel L requirements to meet Assembly Bill 1180. The handbook creates requirements for backflow prevention, assembly tester, and cross connection control specialist certification programs, and backflow incident response reporting timeframes, response plans, and customer notification. Finally, the record-keeping requirements were increased and clarified from the existing regulations. Please keep in mind that these are not all of the changes between the existing regulations and the handbook, and that we are only highlighting some of the largest changes. We are now going to begin receiving your oral comments. Please keep your comments to no more than three minutes per commenter to ensure that everyone has adequate time to make their comments. If you have particularly detailed comments, then we do suggest that you consider submitting your comments in writing to the email address shown earlier on the title slide and now below at ddw-techops@waterboards.ca.gov. Please note that the division may accept late comments, but that will be at our discretion. And with that, let's begin oral comments. Apologies for the delay, we're having a slight technical error.
Hello, this is Cindy Forbes. I'm the retired deputy director for the Division of Drinking Water. I apologize, once you quit working, you forget how to use technology. Our first speaker is from the Los Angeles County Public Works Department, and it's Marcos Faricchio. And Marcos, please begin your comments, and I will tell you when your three-minute time period is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I didn't have a comment so much as a question. I was just curious how the board thought about the the issue, or not issue, but what they would do in the event of an illicit, unbannounced switch over from recycled water to potable water? And what the board thought measures, good measures would be to rectify this?
Well, I don't, I, I don't know that we have considered the game plan for that type of activity. But we will certainly consider having policy developed to deal with that sort of violation.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the fail safes, if you guys consider any. Thank you very much.
Just to step in very quickly, please note that this is intended to be more of a public, a kind of a public comment session for us to receive your comments. We had not intended this to be a question and answer session. We will, any comments or questions made during the public hearing will be considered as we review, as part of our review, and we'll respond to them in larger response action. Thank you.
This is Cindy again, and I confess that I do not have the list of speakers. So if someone could email me that, I would sure appreciate it. Our next speaker is Charles LaSalle. And I apologize, Charles, I do not know the agency you're representing, or if you just are representing yourself.
No worries, I am Charles LaSalle, and I represent Water Reuse California. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to comment today. As you know, Water Reuse California sponsored AB 1180, which authorized the inclusion of a changeover device or swivel L into the handbook. We appreciate that the current draft includes swivel Ls in the 2021 handbook. We do have several suggested changes specifically to Section 3.2.2. Firstly, we ask that a swivel L be in a location that requires the utility be present when switching between water sources, and this is probably just a clarification or a small addition. Second, Section 3.2.2.5A, we ask that the phrasing be changed from immediately prior, and we asked that be changed to say within 72 hours following. This will allow the water utility time to do the testing, and it's more representative of a real-world situation. Lastly, we ask that it be clarified that the installation of a swivel L is optional for a water utility. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. We also included these and a couple others in our written comments, which we submitted this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Next up, we have Tom Inslo from Adams, Broadwell, Joseph, and Cardozo.
Thank you. Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this issue and appreciate you guys holding this hearing today. Now, it's these regulations governing backflow devices and testing have been out of date for quite a while, so it's good to see us moving forward on this, especially as we're moving toward a period where we're going to need to use more and more recycled water and on-site water reuse that's really going to make, that's going to require that we really make sure that we have good backflow testing and cross connection testing. I'm speaking today on behalf of the California State Pipe Trades Council, and you know, the long concern we've had with these outdated standards is that they, you know, assumed that local jurisdictions that each have their own certification program for acceptance for backflow testers. But in reality, private certifications have been used by almost all of the jurisdictions, and there's now three statewide private certifications, AWA, the American Backflow Prevention Association, and ASSE, and all essentially the same. But what has happened is that there's, hasn't been consistency on what certifications are accepted across the state, and that's created a real burden for workers, and particularly for the unions that are represented who train to the ASSE standard, which they believe is the best standard because it's ANSI certified. And, you know, what we can't have, you know, you can't have where one worker can work in one jurisdiction but can't work in another jurisdiction, can these jurisdictions have different certifications? And this handbook goes, you know, a long way toward resolving that by having the State Water Resources Control Board review and approve statewide certifications. But we'd like to see just some more clarification in the handbook that water, in particular, you know, private water companies and other water, you know, public water agencies cannot discriminate between certifications. These are all the same, and we've had instances in the past where a employee of a water company has been on the board of one certification and has refused to accept other certifications. Now, and the building standards from, you know, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, they realized that having separate requirements in every jurisdiction does not work because construction is a statewide activity. And so they took the actions to have statewide codes that are uniform, and we need uniform certifications as well. So we'd just like to see some clarifications that, the certifications that are approved by the State Water Resources Control Board are going to be acceptable throughout the state on Wilson-Mittson written comments on that. But thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Cleary from Myatmo.
Hello. I am from the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials, and I am the director of their Backflow Prevention Institute. The California State Water Resource Board has taken an important step with the development of the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook. This will provide much-needed guidance to better regulate backflow prevention products, their methods, installation, and the testing of this vital protection. I am very pleased that the ASSE product standards and professional certifications are finally being considered for inclusion on a statewide basis. As a training school for certified backflow assembly testers, I have seen firsthand the issues certified testers in the state of California face as a result of the complete lack of uniform standards or acceptance of certification programs in the state. What is accepted in San Diego may not be allowed in the next city or even by a specific water purveyor or jurisdiction in the same county. There are no certifications accepted on a statewide basis, and a tester may be required to hold a number of certifications in order to test backflow prevention assemblies in this area of the state where they do business. In many cases, the selection of certification programs seems to be based on personal relationships, industry politics, or simply a refusal to make program changes because of the time and the effort that's required to do that. This needs to end, and with the development of the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook, we now have the vehicle to make that happen. The draft handbook sets a minimum standard for certification programs and hopefully puts in place a fair, straightforward, and thorough process for statewide approval of certifiers and of certification programs. This will allow individuals who are or wish to become certified backflow assembly testers, specialists, surveyors, and having you to achieve a state-approved certification and then have that certification accepted anywhere in California. Doing this will allow certified individuals and companies and businesses that employ them to enjoy a level playing field to work within. It will provide continuity for programs around the state and will break up unfair monopolies that now exist in California. It will also improve cross connection control programs across the state and allow us to protect the quality of drinking water in California. It should also allow water purveyors to use the resources currently focused on program acceptance, or in some cases, the testing of individual testers, to use those resources for expanding their enforcement, promotion, and public education on cross connections and on backflow prevention. Having this program enacted and enforced on a statewide basis must be accomplished, and these requirements must be included in the new handbook and become part of any new regulation. Thank you for allowing me to comment on this important topic, and we will, of course, be, in addition, sending in the written comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Next, we have Tracy Manning from Mesa Water District. I guess Tracy isn't in the meeting. Okay, next up, we have Benjamin Bennett, a backflow prevention specialist.
There we go. Okay, can't get the picture to go up though. Anyway, thank you so much for giving me the time. I recognize the immense task the state Water Board's taken on trying to develop this handbook and appreciate the time and effort that's gone into it now. I was really excited to review this and get the opportunity to provide feedback on it, so thank you. After reviewing the document, I would like to urge the board to include stakeholders and subject matters in the continued development of this handbook. While I understand this is the first draft, the guidance that I really desired to find in the document was noticeably missing. Examples were not provided in any significant way. Samples on how to develop and implement cross connection programs for the various types of PWSs, which were previously included in the green manual, were left out of this one. And terms which were defined for years have been redefined or confused, as well as the titles, responsibilities, and duties of the various players within the Cross Connection Control Program. There were sections which I had pleasure of reviewing with subject matter experts, but we could not conclusively determine in any significant way as to what the meaning or intent was behind them. We found issues with things such as confusion between what a cross connection survey and a hazard assessment are, the qualifications of a cross connection control program coordinator. The PWS is being required to coordinate with local entities, but will the local entities be required to coordinate with the PWS? There's an expected range of knowledge for the cross connection specialists, but none for testers, the cross connection control coordinator, or the hazard assessor. There's a requirement for the DC to be installed at fire service connections, which conflicts with CHSC Section 13114.7, as listed in Appendix G. We'd like clarity, would be appreciated, as to the reasoning behind listing two approved backflow assembly testing laboratories when one of the two actually performed both laboratory and field evaluations, and none were previously listed. The requirements for repairs to be performed within 30 days, considering that some companies take up to 30 days to provide a purchase order, parts need to be ordered, and shutdowns need to be scheduled, seems a bit excessive and potentially discriminatory. I applaud the requirements for certification agencies to keep a list of testers that they've revoked from their tester list, but we need a requirement for the public water system to report those people to the certification agencies. Many potable water systems find these people, and it cannot report them to the certifying agencies due to litigation issues. So it needs to be a requirement. And I fail to really recognize the benefit of accreditation for certification. I believe we'd be a little better off if the state reviewed the few programs that are out there for the differences that are between them and approved them themselves, rather than making them go through an accreditation process that will not ensure that the certification agency meets any of the requirements that the state has described in this document. The additional costs incurred by the certification agencies to obtain and maintain, maintain this accreditation will certainly be passed on to the certificate holders and ultimately on to the consumers. And if the state is going to require accreditation, then how can the state dictate an expected range of knowledge when the state requirements may or may not coincide with accreditation requirements and standards? Finally, once again, I'd just like to make sure that in the future, I know this is supposed to be a living document. We'd love to see the state work with subject matter experts the way the California Plumbing Code is reviewed and developed every three years, that this document also be reviewed every three years rather than every 30 years. Thank you for my time.
Thanks, Benjamin. And again, I think it was mentioned previously, but for those of you who have extensive comments, we would really appreciate receiving those in writing if possible.
You will.
Our next speaker is Roger Vanderling, and I apologize if I butcher anybody's name. Thank you. Roger, are you in the meeting? We'll move forward, and if he joins later or lets us know he'd still like to speak, we'll let him have an opportunity. How about Robert Przynski?
That's Przynski, Robert Przynski.
Sorry.
No problem. Questions I have, a lot of discussion on the proposals, the handbook. What was decided, or who decided the committee to do this review? Are they backflow testers, specialists, industry people? We, we have no idea who wrote these reviews. Can you fill us in on that, or is there a list? Is there a government, since it's a government agency, there must be a published list of who this committee is?
Yes, I'll respond. There are a group of division staff who, most of us have more years than we'd like to think in dealing with cross connection control, and we were the primary authors of the policy handbook.
But are they, were they certified testers, specialists? What is their field training, anything?
We have at least two who have taken the USC course, and I'm not sure that I can articulate everyone else's experience like myself. I never was a certified tester and never attended the USC course.
No, I understand, yeah, that's, that's part of the problem here is that, like with Myatmo- No, I understand. Yeah, that's, that's part of the problem here is that, um, like with I am, most in the plumbing codes. The format of the board or the committee that does the reviews are made up of inspectors, testers, specialists, teachers. And so on. You have a rather large group of information and people that have been in the industry for years experience. Especially in the field, because this document relates to the field. More so than just writing a law that a certain thing has to be done. Uh, the testing procedures, troubleshooting, uh, hazards, all that has to be done through field experience. Uh, no disrespect to the committee, but sitting in an office does not, uh, give you enough information to write a document. That we as, uh, I'm a certified tester, proctor, teacher, whatever, for the last thirty years plus. And, uh, you pick up a lot of stuff in the field experience and, um, sitting on the USC committee, the tenth edition. Uh, we had a whole format of different people from the industry writing that manual. And it's important that you have the testers participate or, uh, give information on this. And I was curious again who the committee was, but that withstanding, um, there's probably twenty to thirty glaring errors. In this document, um, I had sent a number of emails in with no response. So I'm wondering if you could clarify the email that we can respond to with these documents? Because, uh, I've had no response from anybody for the at least dozen requests I've made. One glaring error, uh, that I found is that on your description of the backflow devices. On the pressure vacuum breaker, you describe it as a, it must have tightly closing shut off valves. But on the PV, on the RP device, it says shut off valves. So there's issues like that wording that. Uh, has to be clarified, and I think it's important that we know where to send these comments to. And more importantly, uh, to get industry people, testers, specialists, and people who are in the field. Involved in this process because we're the ones that are going to have to comply with it. And I thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you, and we'll make sure we re, uh, announce the email for comments for this. Next speaker is Stacy Lowe. How about Allison Feng of San Mateo? Anyone who, uh, doesn't jump in when I say their name, we will give you a chance if you join in later in the meeting. Uh, next, we have Stephen Molina of Ucaipa Valley Water District. Okay.
Hello.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I'm in the field right now. I'm just, uh, um, listening in on the conversation right now. Uh, yeah, one of our biggest concerns is we were, uh, very interested on, on dual plumb. Like communities and homes and, and the implementation of the recycle as a, as a. As a cross connection protection measure, and we're, we're just, um. Constantly looking forward to, uh, seeing the updates and what's going on with, uh, with the. The cross connection control policy handbook. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Next up, we have Sean Harrison. How about Pauline Liu from the city of Anaheim?
Hi, this is Pauline. I am going to submit my comments and writings.
Thank you. How about? Yi Ho Chin. From the city of Sacramento. Okay, we'll keep moving forward. Uh, next, I have Diana Jones. From Los Angeles Department of Water and Power.
Hello, uh, thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on behalf of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. My name is Diana Jones. I'm the manager of regulatory affairs and consumer protection. And, uh, the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power offers these following recommendations. Um, we recommended the state board remove the requirement that cross connection control specialists also have to be certified testers. Uh, currently, we do not conduct testing, and we should be allowed to administer a program that uses other individuals or vendors to test. Uh, customers' backflow assemblies. We also recommended the requirement to obtain the state board's approval when accepting internal protections in lieu of meter service. Protection be a discretionary action for public water systems. If not, we will be seeking state board approval numerous times based on our existing program sites that are currently listed. On the new, uh, high hazard listing contained in the cross connection control policy handbook. Uh, this would create unnecessary delays in administering the program and excessive use of our resources and staff time if we are to meet this requirement. Also, L A D W P recommends that public water systems be allowed to conduct hazard assessments based on impacts. Uh, to the water system and not according to the definition provided in the cross connection control policy handbook. Which states that a hazard assessment properly identify all the hazards, the degree of the hazard, and the corresponding backflow protection. And that's in section, uh, three point two point one H. Uh, we have a local, uh, health agency that conducts, uh, inspections to determine all the internal backflow protections. And they document, uh, the corresponding backflow protection, uh, devices that are necessary. And this will be duplicate work for L A D W P. Uh, we also submitting these written comments. We will also be submitting written comments today, and we will also submit these comments if you, as you've requested on from the public hearing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diana. Uh, next, we have Mary Ann Wakeman from A S S E.
Good morning. My name is Mary Ann Wakeman. I'm the director of business operations at A S S E International. And I'm speaking in support of the cross connection control policy handbook. Uh, and specifically, I'm speaking in support of section three point three point one. Inclusion of the A S S E certification requirements in accordance with the A S S E standards for backflow prevention assemblies. A S S E is an ANSI accredited product certification body in accordance with ISO seventeen oh six five. A S S E has a proven record for compliance and safety, allowing for multiple approved certification bodies. Will help manufacturers to get new and improved products to market more quickly. I'm also speaking in support of section three point four point one B six. Requiring a minimum number of hours and days of instructional training for backflow testers. Testing of backflow assemblies is the only way of knowing that they are working correctly and effectively. Training and certification of backflow prevention testers is imperative to, uh, in ensuring that the water is properly protected. And finally, I'm speaking in support of section three point four point one D. Requiring ANSI accreditation of the certifying organization. This is a positive step in assuring that there is oversight over the certifying bodies issuing backflow tester certifications. Thank you for your time today, and thank you for the water boards, uh, and staff for the time and effort. They have put into making this a stronger cross connection control program for the state of California. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Next on our list, we have Ian Welke from G and G Environmental Compliance. Okay, in the interest of time, I'll move on. How about Andrew Crawford from Corona? Moving forward, how about Henry Chang from USC?
Uh, yes, uh, my name is, uh, Henry Chang. I'm the chief engineer and the program manager for the University of Southern California. Foundation for Cross Connection Control and Hydraulic Research, or commonly known as the USC Foundation. Uh, wanted to say good morning to everybody. Uh, like to thank the California Water Resources Control Board for all their efforts. Uh, in drafting this cross connection control policy handbook, uh, and also this opportunity to provide our comments. Uh, we have submitted our written comments, uh, of our review of this handbook and would like to additionally provide, uh, some oral comments. Uh, first off, in regards to chapter three, article one on definitions and general requirements. Uh, request clarifications and corrections to some of the definitions for the air gap, the swivel L, and some of the backflow prevention assemblies. Uh, for example, the air gap and swivel L are listed as backflow prevention assemblies. Uh, they are not considered backflow prevention assemblies, uh, since backflow prevention assemblies have to be field tested on an annual basis. Uh, we recommend that you change the designation to either a method or arrangement. Uh, the type two D C D A and R P D A assemblies bypass descriptions, uh, are incorrect. Uh, they may, they mentioned having a backflow prevention assembly where they actually have a check valve assembly around the second check of the mainline assembly. Um, also, the term, uh, premise isolation is used, uh, for service protection. Uh, I, we believe more typically the term system protection or containment, uh, should be used instead of, uh, premise isolation. Uh, in regards to chapter three, article three, which is the, uh, backflow prevention assemblies on the standards. Uh, we'd like to see in, uh, that expand the backflow prevention assemblies that are listed. Uh, currently, I think it just says the P V B double check and, and RP, uh, like to see like the detector assemblies also listed on that. Uh, in regards to also the standards, uh, there's a list for item one, two, three, which mentions, uh, USC and A S S E. Uh, we would recommend that we either remove these three items or provide more clarification. Uh, as an alternate, as an alternate, we recommend using the language from existing title seventeen to be used instead. Um, uh, for item one, uh, in regards to USC, the foundation's approval program requires that all backflow prevention assemblies successfully complete. Both a laboratory and field evaluation to gain approval. Uh, however, in the handbook, it only references the standards found in, in the USC manual tenth edition. Uh, and does not address, uh, assemblies that are proven under previous editions. Uh, there are many assemblies currently in service that fall under that category. Uh, for item two in the A S S E standards listed, uh, the backflow prevention assemblies may only be laboratory evaluated and not field evaluated. Uh, the standards say that a field test or evaluation may be needed when administrative authority requires it, and a manufacturer requests that evaluation. Uh, so there are some backflow prevention assemblies that are A S S E listed but may not have a field evaluation. Uh, so all of this could create some confusion and some logistical issues for the P W S. Uh, so, uh, that's why we request either removal or more clarification on that. Uh, in regards to chapter three, article four, and testers and specialists. Uh, for the training, uh, the length, uh, the training course should, uh, not be prescribed and mentioned thirty-two or forty hours. Uh, reason, uh, really, the key thing here is that the applicants cover, uh, the training covers the knowledge that they need. Based on the need to know criteria, the range of knowledge. Uh, given example with USC under the specialists, we will not meet the forty hour criteria. Part of that reason is we don't count the examination time, uh, into the course, uh, so things like that. Uh, and finally, we would recommend that the board set up or appoint an advisory committee, uh, to help with this policy handbook and provide any needed information. Uh, thank you for allowing me to present some of our oral comments in this public hearing. Uh, we hope the, the information from a review of the policy handbook is helpful. Uh, should you need clarification on our oral or written comments or additional information from the foundation, please let us know. Uh, we are here to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Okay, next on our list, we have Adam Pfeffer of San Jose Water.
Hi, Cindy. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. Um, San Jose Water is, uh, pleased to be able to, to make some feedback before the, the cross connection. Um, policy handbook is finalized. And, uh, generally speaking, San Jose Water is concerned by the lack of potable water system participation during the development of the C C C P H. Uh, to maximize the effectiveness of any regulation. Um, we've, we've found in the past that it's critical that these types of regulations are developed with direct involvement of both regulators and the regulated community. So we advise that an advisory panel for the C C C P H be, uh, created to inform the needed revisions to this draft regulations. That includes potable water systems. I, I'm going to limit my comments to some of the, the, uh, the things that are, I, I consider to be the most impactful. And I am going to be submitting, uh, written comments covering a wide span, uh, of, of topics. Um, uh, regarding, uh, section two point two and kind of the overall overarching framework of how the, the policy handbook is applied to potable water systems. I think it's very important that depending on the authority and capacity of a potable water system, that they have, uh, be granted the ability to choose. To enact a program for internal protection, uh, in addition to or in lieu of meter protection, but not be clearly given that option. Um, many potable water systems, uh, like ourselves, uh, don't have the capacity. Or the ordinance or code enforcement, uh, provisions that would be necessary to execute an internal protection program. And, um, so, uh, the support of that type of option, I think, is critical for the success of, uh, the policy handbook. Additionally, uh, that, uh, there is a significant amount of clarification I think needs to be brought to the hazard assessment section. Um, it, it appears on reading, but it's not, uh, it's not totally clear whether the hazard assessment section is intended to include. All residential service connections. Uh, if this is the case, I cannot emphasize enough that this is a significant departure. From us current practice and will have a dramatic ramifications to the industry. If both the initial and recurring hazard assessment, um, is required at every residential connection in a service area. Currently, for San Jose Water, residential connections, uh, comprise, uh, approximately ninety-five percent of service connections. So this would be a dramatic, dramatic, uh, expansion of, of our, uh, cross connection program. Which is currently predominantly limited, uh, limited to, uh, residential services. When either an alternative water supply, auxiliary water source, recycled water, or gray water recycling or pumping system is known. To be at, uh, present at the residence. Um, additionally, within the hazard assessment section, it's not entirely clear to me whether, uh, hazard assessments would require an in-person presence. For evaluation of the premise plumbing, or whether that's something that could be done remotely with the right informational resources. Uh, request clarification on that. And, um, as somebody who is trying to approach this from a labor burden perspective, without clear time constraints. On both the execution of the initial hazard assessment and any follow-up frequency hazard assessments. Um, well, I'm not going to be, uh, I, it's going to be extremely difficult or unlikely to be able to get the labor support needed. Authorized by the Public Utilities Commission if we don't know how frequently that is going to be required. Um, uh, additionally, I wanted to comment on the swivel L section. Um, I, I think, um, uh, water reuse for their initial prior comment, I think it, it does need to be more clearly stated. That the installation of a swivel L should be optional for the public water system, which is not entirely clear from the language. And, um, uh, it appears from the, from the writing that the apparent intent is to increase the feasibility of use of recycled water. Um, it has to be understood that except in rare instances, potable water systems typically would not have control of access. Or operation of swivel L. It has to be understood that except in rare instances, potable water systems typically would not have control of access or operation of swivel Ls. These would typically be on private property, only accessible by customers, and we won't know what they're doing with them. So unless the limitations on potable water system control of swivel Ls are recognized in the public policy handbook, I do not think they're likely to increase the use of swivel Ls in industry because water systems won't be able to meet the requirements for usage because of that lack of control. And then lastly, regarding changes, proposed changes in certification standards, San Jose Water is of the opinion that uniformity of certification is not nearly as important as quality, and we don't take an official stance as to the specific changes approved, so much as it should be noted that hands-on testing is critical for judging the efficacy or proficiency of a tester. And we would, we are in opposition to any changes to the certification program that would eliminate hands-on testing as a requirement for gaining certification. So I believe, we believe it's a needed aspect of proficiency testing for this expertise. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thanks, Adam. Next on our list, we have Fossil Nahaus, City of Burbank. Moving on, how about Larry Leifer with Helix Water District?
Good morning. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity that the board allows us to speak today. My name is Larry Leifer. I represent Helix Water District, which is located in eastern portion of San Diego County. I'm a T5-D5 Chief Operator, and I oversee the Cross Connection Program for Helix Water District. We serve 277,000 customers through 57,000 service connections over a 50-square-mile area. This leads me to my first comment. In Article Two, under Hazards Assessments and Required Protection 3.2.1 Hazard Assessments, subsection E, each community water system must conduct an initial hazard assessment of the user premises within its service area. And then it goes on about non-community, which I won't discuss here. But this section is followed by eight points that are fairly detailed to be considered in the hazard assessment. They go into the complexity and detail of the hazard assessments. My point here is that in-person assessments for every connection are not feasible. As an example, in Helix Water District, if we were required to do in-person for each connection at current staffing levels, it will take just over 27 years to complete the assessments. Or if you want to adjust it to staff hours, we will need to accommodate 57,000 staff hours. We would rather suggest that assessment can be done with administrative measures such as residential homes, which would be low or no hazard. Then areas where knowns like hospitals, mortuaries, gas stations, and such require RP assemblies. Clarifying that administrative measures are acceptable when ensured that the physical assessments and resources needed to complete them are utilized in the areas of high hazards. Failing to do so may be considered an unfunded mandate by the state. In addition, we would like to recommend that in Section 3.2.1E, where it says a community water system shall perform follow-up hazard assessments if a user premises changes ownership, this should be clarified to exclude residential homes, in our opinion. My final comment here, I would also believe that the board should consider the establishment of a formal advisory committee of industry experts, stakeholders, and regulators. This, we would recommend, is much like the existing Operator Certification Advisory Committee, which I am a two-term member of and consider it to be a valuable forum for industry and regulators to work together. This new committee could help ensure timely updates to the Cross Connection Control pamphlet with more consensus among users prior to implementing it and could greatly reduce the time and input it's taking to come out with this initial assessment. With that, I thank you and I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Larry. Next on the list, we have Mark Tetmer from Irvine Ranch Water District.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, good morning. Thank you, Cindy, and thank you to the State Board for allowing us the opportunity to provide some comments. We will have a letter which will touch on many aspects of our comments, but I wanted just to sort of feature four. One, I want to echo the comments made previously about the recognition that residential sites and ongoing hazard assessments and even initial hazard assessments would be problematic. We echo that assessment or that comment. Regarding follow-up hazard assessments, it's not clear about whether that extends to low-hazard sites and would like to have that clarified, and that, once clarified, then that may be a subject of a second round of comments. Also want to, I think others have touched on this, reiterate that it's helpful to clearly state that the public water suppliers are responsible up to the point where backflow protection exists, whether that's at the meter or potentially internal protection. The downstream of those points would be the subject of another agency or another entity, say, a local health officer's responsibility. We think it'd be helpful if the policy handbook would clearly state that. That's our understanding, but want to make sure that's clearly stated. Also, that in Appendix D lists a number of what the state's defining as high-hazard sites. There are some called out for recycled water with some footnotes. It appears that those are really, those recycle water and the footnotes are associated with dual-plum sites. But there's also auxiliary sites. It would be helpful to clarify or state that auxiliary sites includes all recycle water use sites, or at least all that have domestic water on them. That'd be helpful just to clarify that because that's a significant expansion of the scope beyond dual-plummed. If follow-up hazard assessments are required at all recycle water use sites. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and we will be providing a letter with these comments and others. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Next on the list, we have John Graham from California Water Service.
Thank you. I'm John Graham, Manager of Cross Connection Control for California Water Service. My comments are offered on behalf of CalWater and are no particular priority. CalWater will submit a track changes document encompassing many of my comments. ISO accreditation will do very little to improve the quality of the testers and specialists directly involved with public health protection while driving up costs to the consumer. No certification program has yet achieved ISO accreditation with a hands-on component. Working under the requirements of Title 17, CalWater has objectively evaluated six certification programs operating in our service areas using the same standards outlined in the CCCPH. Some programs chose to meet these standards, others did not, and are not recognized in our service areas. It is not about picking winners or losers, but maintain quality certification programs. I'm not suggesting that the PWS has remained responsible for certification programs. As demonstrated by some of the previous comments, perceived bias truly dilutes the motivation of public health protection. Less than one week of staff time per program was required. There are a total of nine programs statewide. Our hope is that the Water Board with all the resources at their disposal can find nine weeks every three to five years to audit these programs, much the same as they perform sanitary surveys of PWSs, rather than requiring ISO accreditation that will not measure the quality of the program, just the consistency. Potable construction meters equipped with backflow protection assemblies cannot practically be tested each time they are relocated, sometimes several times each day. In July 2017, CalWater received written confirmation from Bruce Burton, Assistant Deputy Director of the Drinking Water Branch, recognizing this reality. In that letter, testing every six months was authorized. CalWater asked that this testing frequency be included in the handbook. The handbook will be used not only by public water systems and the Water Board, but every customer that is attempting to circumvent installation of required backflow prevention assemblies. There are several areas of the handbook that need greater clarity to reduce the likelihood of disputes related to differing interpretations. If residential connections are included in the hazard assessment requirements, the handbook needs to be very clear. Without specific requirements, a PWS will have a difficult time gaining internal approval and the additional staff required to implement residential assessments. Finally, CalWater encourages the Water Board to create an advisory panel made up of Water Board staff and industry representatives. To have a truly functional handbook, the perspective of the PWS must be woven into the guidance. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, John. Next on the list, we have Paul Schwartz from USC.
Yes, thank you, Cindy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and it's good to hear so many people participating. I did provide my detailed written comments and recommendations already. I am retired from the USC Foundation, so my comments are for myself. I did want to comment that over many meetings with so many groups over the last several months in the detailed review of the current draft of the policy handbook, there were some areas that were a bit unclear, as we've heard from some folks, and I think more detailing is definitely necessary. One of the things I think we also found is that in the draft, there needs to be emphasis that the community water systems that perform hazard assessments on user premises are not responsible to correct internal plumbing or cross-connections. That's not clearly identified. The current Title 17 does say this, but the draft does not. So there's issues like this, I think, that need to be clearly identified. Cindy, remember back in the 80s, during the stakeholder meetings with the original Title 17, it became very clear at that time that an updated recommended practice or guidance manual was needed. So the state's Green Manual, as many people may remember, was widely circulated to all agencies to help support the new Title 17. And I think in the draft of the policy handbook, it details the submittal of a cross-connection control plan. And I believe that the public water systems will greatly benefit if there's some additional guidance similar to how the Green Manual had examples of model ordinances, standard installations, et cetera, for a lot of things, just additional information that may not be included in the actual policy handbook. In regards to some of the technical corrections, as you've heard from other speakers today, things to be a little more consistent, using some of the more common terminology where the current draft talks about low-hazard, high-hazard, making sure we use the words pollutant and contaminant again to be a little more representative of the industry today and more consistent throughout the document. In addition, issues about installation and test and field testing of the assemblies. I think some of the requirements are very prescriptive, and there needs to be some room for variances to allow the public water systems to, you know, grant those variances for good cause. Example, some of the clearances that are prescribed in the draft may not always be able to be met in actual applications. Also, issues such as the limits, the use of the pressure vacuum breaker for containment or service protection. And as many people remember, the state had to come out with a policy statement many years ago that would allow PVBs for very specific applications like on median strips. So I think, again, that clarification needs to be brought up. And then finally, as so many others have said today, I would hope the Water Board would convene some type of an advisory committee made up of those in the California Cross Connection Control Community for any future updates. And with that, thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and good luck with the rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, next on my list, I have Holly Sinclair of Ventura County. Okay, moving right along. How about Sue Mossberg of Cal Nevada AWWA?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for today's opportunity to take this important step forward to protect public health and receive stakeholder input. My name is Sue Mossberg. I'm the Executive Director of the California Nevada Section of the American Water Works Association, which for 140 years has advocated for safe water, appropriate infrastructure, and trained personnel to operate and maintain the systems as crucial factors in protecting public health. The California Nevada Section of AWWA does maintain a backflow cross-connection control certification program that is recognized by public water systems across California. Our Backflow Committee has been actively involved in activities related to backflow regulation, the certification of individuals in the field of backflow prevention, and cross-connection control for literally decades. We've been providing written comments, or we will be providing written comments that include line-by-line suggestions to clarify numerous items in the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook. So today, I'm going to focus my oral comments to the requirements of ISO accreditation for certifying bodies. Specifically, ISO 17024 outlines standards a certified certification body shall take to document its structure, policies, procedures to manage impartially and minimize the potential conflict of interests arising from its certification activities. While ISO 17024 specifies requirements to administer certification programs in a consistent, objective, and reliable manner, it really is left up to the certification body to eliminate, minimize, or manage any identified sources of conflict. As noted in the handbook itself, related to this particular standard in its introductory statements, these standards are considered to be general requirements designed to be supplemented with requirements that the market needs or desires or that are required by governments. While ISO 17024 sets standards for certification program documentation and administration, it does not set program prerequisites, prescribe assessment methods, ensure alignment of assessment mechanisms with competence requirements, measure the quality of the certification program itself, nor set the criteria for suspending or withdrawing certifications. As such, simply having ISO 17024 accreditation will not ensure a certification program includes all elements of subsection B within the various two sections of the manual, nor will it directly improve public health protection. The requirement to attain anti-accreditation in conformance with ISO 17024 is extensive and expensive and places an additional burden on certifying organizations, public water systems, testers, and ultimately, the public. We believe the certification program costs associated with becoming ISO 17024 accredited will significantly increase costs to testers and ultimately, public water systems and the public. We do believe that ISO 17024 accreditation has very valid items and can lead towards an improvement in the overall system. However, ultimately, it is doubtful that simply required, excuse me, simply requiring anti-accreditation will allow the state to remove itself completely from backflow cross-connection control certification program oversight. I wanted to close by just saying that the AWWA Cal Nevada Section is concerned, as many others have mentioned, with the lack of involvement with the broad spectrum of stakeholders and encourage the establishment of an advisory committee to support finalizing the handbook and to support the state with the future reviews and revisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Next on my list, I have DJ Nunes from IATM. Okay, moving on. How about Jack Bellin from Sacramento? from Sacramento County? Okay, how about Kenneth Payne from San Francisco Public Utilities? Moving forward, how about Luis Huerta from the City of Sacramento?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking my comments. However, I wanted to present my comments as an individual, not representing the City of Sacramento. The city has participated in different groups and has submitted their public comments. I want to speak as a cross connection specialist, a backflow prevention tester that has served both in the public and the private sector in the last few years. And I appreciate that the state is taking the opportunity to create a policy handbook that will help the different water systems, public water systems, to establish cross connection control programs that will help and will satisfy their individual needs. However, it's come to my perception, my personal perception, that there's multiple interest groups that are trying to push their agendas on this topic, creating some gray areas and confusion. For the last 37 years, we had, you know, a cross connection control manuals, Title 17 regulations that work well. And even though some updates are required, we see, you know, that some issues are being arise by some groups trying to push, you know, their ideas or trying to to establish basically or enforce, you know, public agencies and testers to accommodate their interests, their private interests. And I just want to continue encouraging the state board to maintain in sight, you know, that this is going to affect the public health and that public water systems and non-communitary water systems, and they're going to be the ones that are going to left with the consequences and the industry in general for whatever this regulation ends up being the final product. I appreciate everybody who is taking the time to be here and trying to make sure that the Cross Connection Policy Handbook works well for everybody. And those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Luis. Next on my list, I have Anna Montoya of Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. Okay, moving on, another LADWP person, Charles Gill. How about Ellen Pritchett, City of Santa Maria? Bob Sage, City of Brisbane. Nicholas Steiner, Delta Diablo.
Hi, good morning, Cindy. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Delta Diablo is a wastewater treatment plant which provides tertiary treated recycled water to 30-plus use sites. We looked at the policy and had a few comments or were requesting clarification on a few items, particularly in relation to the use of the swivel L. So it's Section 3.2.2 for the backflow protection required. We're asking, you know, the addition of provisions for after-hour emergency switching of a swivel device, you know, where you may not be able to have someone from the local water purveyor available to see the switch. And then other items we're looking for is clarification on the use of a swivel and provisions in relation to other water sources other than potable water. I think the regulations or the policy speaks specifically to the use of tertiary recycled water as a backup to potable water. And we're kind of interested on where raw water aligns with those requirements and if there are specific provisions for when a swivel L is used with a raw water source. We're also hoping for clarification on Appendix C for the swivel L, Item D. I would like to have some clarification on Item D and how it impacts the use of a swivel L at a site which has multiple recycled water uses. So say a site that has one meter, but it has recycled water used for irrigation and dual-plum facilities. Does Item D exclude the use of a swivel L just for the irrigation of that site? It seems a little unclear on this item. And then the last item we're looking for is clarification in Section 3.4.2 of the Cross Connection Control Specialist Certification. Maybe the language is unclear, but it appears that there is a requirement for recertification with a 100-question exam every three years. This is not currently required with AWWA, and we ask that you look at the use of continued educational units versus recertifying with another exam. And those are our comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Next on the list, we have Kevin Day from the Department of General Services.
Thank you, Cindy. This is Kevin Day with the California Building Standards Commission within the Department of General Services. And we administer the code adoption process for the California Building Standards Code Title 24. And we just wanted to thank the board for all their efforts in developing the guide. And we're mainly interested in just, you know, participating in a capacity to ensure any consistency with the California Plumbing Code, Part 5 of Title 24. So we have, we've reviewed the guide, and we have a few, like, minor questions and technical comments that we'll provide in writing by COB today, but we just wanted to thank everyone for their efforts.
Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate it. Next up, we have Vanessa Lumley from Liberty Utilities. Okay, moving forward, Christopher Hunley, Sacramento County.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Appreciate your time on this effort, as long, also with the committee's work on this. Sacramento County Environmental Management Department works on behalf of six different public water suppliers here in Sacramento County. We administer their cross connection control program. And our comments are basically just to ensure that with the adoption of the new guidebook, which is welcome, is just to ensure that there's fidelity and parity with the different certifying bodies, both for backflow testers and for cross connection control specialists. And then the other component would be to ensure that there's no removal of the authority for public water suppliers to partner with environmental health agencies or other departments in helping them administer their cross connection control program. Thanks again, and look forward to continued work on this effort.
Thank you, Christopher. Next on the list, Jennifer Capitolo.
Hi, Jennifer Capitolo with the California Water Association. And we were the sponsors back in 2017 of AB 1671, which created this process for updating and creating the handbook. I just want to thank staff for all your hard work on this. I know it was a lot. And I feel like back when we helped write this legislation, we must have foresaw how complicated and technical this would be having two community meetings on this process. So we are submitting our letter of comments and writing, and I'm not going to review them with you today. But I just, you know, having these opportunities for two sets of comments, we took the approach of doing a broader set of comments through this first technical meeting. And then we're going to get into some more details, hopefully, come the second round of public comments on this. So again, just a thank you for all your hard work on this, and we look forward to working with you going forward.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next on my list, I have Sean Kelly. Moving forward, David Ochoa. How about Stella Poole? Shannon Coffin? Adriana Negregas? Stephen Garner? Jeremy Costello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, hi. Okay, good. So yeah, my name is Jeremy Costello. I'm with the Kappa Valley Water District. I'm a public works supervisor here, and we do work with the Recycled Water User Program here and Cross Connection Control. There are a lot of great comments that are coming in on this. I really appreciate everybody's input on this and look forward to seeing some obvious changes and adjustments here and there. So I do have a question in regards to the swivel L. And unfortunately, I'm not as per se detailed in the sections and references there. So I did have a question, and maybe I'm barking up the wrong tree here, but I'm thinking if there is a way to look at this. I wrote down some sentences here, so I'm just going to read them off. Regarding the swivel L changeover device, currently, the draft language appears to only be written from the viewpoint of supplying water source to a dual-plum site in the event of an interruption of the normal recycled water supply from the purveyor. Is there a way that we can add language that will allow for the submittal and approval of a purveyor to do the same for their own recycled water distribution network? Should there be a network interruption? So for like a situational example, the purveyor of recycled water has an area of their recycled water distribution network that is temporarily offline by either a planned outage or an unplanned outage, such as like an emergency shutdown. Due to the time constraints of some outages, some may last for days or even weeks. Customers will not have recycled water at this time. In lieu of adding a swivel L or changeover device at each dual-plum property, the purveyor may have an alternate sourcing plan to use a temporary changeover device to source their owned and operated recycled water network downstream of the outage area, which in turn keeps the dual-plum service connections active and interruptions of service minimized. This will keep the quantity of swivel L's changeover devices to a minimum and will be much easier for the purveyor to control and prevent unintended cross connections. So if this is not addressed, then each dual-plum property would need to be reviewed, submitted, and processed through the regional state offices and the water purveyor, which in turn only adds to the delays for approvals. Also, not every property has a location that has a suitable swivel L changeover device where it can be readily installed without having major impacts on their sites. Most dual-plum properties have the utilities coming in from either a public street or utility easement, wherein the utilities may normally be found under the site driveways and parking lots. In many, if not most, cases, the suitable lines for making these temporary connections are not within a viable distance of each other. This could lead to the need for the site to interrupt their daily and/or business activities for construction of a swivel or changeover device. And most dual-plum user sites are not financially ready for such a challenge. So that's my basic comment on the swivel L. I'll go ahead and leave it at that, and I'll just wait for an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. The next speaker is Patty Faver of the American Backflow Prevention Association.
Hi, Cindy. Thank you for recognizing me. I was just listening in. I hadn't, we have sent in our written comments, and I wasn't prepared to give any verbal comments today.
No worries. Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak who would, apparently, either I jumped over or they are not on our list? Again, I'd like to thank everyone for their comments today. I would really encourage all of you to submit written comments. It's certainly much easier for us to not lose track of them. And if someone would like to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting.
Cindy, there's a few hands up from Contracosta and Ventura.
Okay. I'll let Contracosta go first. How's that sound?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing the comments. I just wanted to echo some of the comments that we have already heard. I think it's really important that the board listen to the stakeholders that have, I think, really good comments and have not only made the comments, but also have made some suggested language changes that will be submitted to the board. And I hope to help the board clean up some of the language that's in the proposed draft language. A lot of people have worked really hard on this. And I think that together, we can have a handbook that would really serve the purpose of all the people that have an interest in protecting our water supplies. So this is Sean Kelly. We're Contracosta Water. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And would our last proposed speaker like to take a turn?
Hi, this is Ron Ventura. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Ron Ventura. I'm a supervisor with the Ventura County Environmental Health Division. And we administer a cross connection control program for 28 water purveyors in our county. We also run a certification program for those contracted purveyors. We also have other counties, Santa Barbara, other cities, Carpinteria, Gualita, Long Poak, that accept our certifications. So it's very important that we maintain our certification programs for these purveyors. So the requirement to attain ISO IEC 17024 accreditation is very expensive and onerous and does not improve the quality of the training. It places an undue burden on certification agencies, PWSs, testers, and the public. It places an undue burden on certification agencies, PWS's, testers, and the public. While ISO 17024 evaluates the certification program documentation, it does not measure the quality of the certification program itself and will not appreciably improve public health protection. So currently, no tester specialist certification programs are credited to this ISO standard and have a hands-on performance examination of testers. Conformance with ISO standards would likely require that multiple proctors observe a single applicant during the hands-on portion of this exam. The program cost associated with this standard of accreditation is very costly. It would drive up possibly tester fees to thousands of dollars. And there is no guarantee that a certifying organization would successfully navigate the accreditation process on the first attempt, which could mean multiple attempts involving multiple psychometrician evaluations driving the cost of an already costly and time-consuming process up even further, possibly in to the tens of thousands of dollars possibly. So in general, this division does not support the ISO IEC 17024 accreditation for our program. Again, this requirement would be very cost prohibitive and adds nothing to protect public health. Instead, we would like to see the requirement deleted and have the state Water Board recognize certifying organizations for backflow prevention, assembly testers, and specialists. I do have a prepared comments that I will submit via email. And I appreciate you acknowledging me and letting me express my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes all of our folks who indicated they would like to speak. And we appreciate you attending our public hearing.
So with that, we will be closing today's public hearing. And we look forward to having those who mentioned that they were going to provide public comments via written comments. So we look forward to reviewing those and will, at some point, reconvene for our second public hearing. Thank you all.